was to erect a housing opportunity that will restore hope, and then restore faith, and then restore love for one another. So this recognition and celebration of housing, those most in need, providing comprehensive long-term supportive services, and a place youth can continue to find a new narrative for meeting their dreams and aspirations, is that light in the darkness. It is one of the answers to the question, where do we go from here? As the new president and CEO of Community Build, please know that we will continue to set our sights on projects like this, and working side by side with our elected. The best is still yet to come. Thank you very much.
Beautifully said. I also want to give shouts out to other folks from the Oversight Committee for HHH that are here. These are civilians who volunteer their time. Tanua Thresh, I want to thank Amelia Washington and Michael Lenz as well. Give them a round of applause and thank them too. Finally, I want to thank our deputy mayor for City Homeless Initiatives, Mochi, Christina Miller and her team, Ben, Amy, HHH team, past and future. You guys made this all happen too. So thank you and give them a round of applause. And with that, congratulations. Let's make 2020 a year of making a difference. I want to thank again, family for sharing your story. As you can hear, one of the kids is a little bit under the weather. There's been a bug going around everywhere in Los Angeles. I know that. But I want to thank them again for opening up. So let's give the scenes another round of applause. And welcome home, guys. With that, we'll see you at the next opening.
In LA this week, an historic moment in Los Angeles as the first of many Prop HHH-finished housing units opens its doors.
The city's Bureau of Engineering tackles homelessness head-on by building temporary shelters throughout the city, including this one to benefit homeless veterans. I'm Gil Reyes with details next.
I'm Saidah Pagan in Watts, where there's some good news for local residents who've been living in a food desert for far too long. I'll have that story coming right up.
Hey, everyone, I'm Yana K. Here's what's happening in LA this week. The city's first permanent supportive housing project, funded by Proposition HHH, has opened at 88th Street and Vermont Avenue, nearly three years after the first housing bonds were issued. For many people, this is a true blessing.
Just the way that, you know, my kids look and the excitement in their faces to not have to sleep in the truck no more, priceless.
We see here in plain sight what a vision is when it manifests itself physically. The commitment that Angelenos made just three years ago to see a building now open less than two and a half years after the first bonds were issued for Prop HHH.
This is a huge job that is before each and every one of us. But I truly believe I am dumb enough to believe that together we can do this. And it begins with projects like this.
We wouldn't be here, and this wouldn't be possible, without the people to help us. They've done a great, great, great deal to get us where we're at, and I'm happy. And I'm glad that God put them in our life.
We have 149 permanent supportive housing projects, funded and under construction as we speak, which will manifest some 11,500 bedrooms of housing that both will keep people out of homelessness and bring them out of homelessness.
Rent subsidies and housing vouchers for tenants will be provided by both LA County and the city of LA. On the west side, even more housing is going up. This one is a Bridge Home site for veterans on the VA campus in Brentwood. Gil Reyes gives us an update on construction.
Hope may be coming for the two dozen or so homeless veterans camped outside the West LA VA campus. Temporary bridge housing with 100 beds is coming to the campus in February. You're gonna have showers and laundry facilities. Is that something that sounds like you would take advantage of?
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
Anyone in the immediate area who is experiencing homelessness and a veteran, they would qualify for a place here at the Bridge Home Project.
Marcelino Asensio from the city's Bureau of Engineering gives us a preview. Two main structures are coming, each one with 50 beds and supportive services.
Right now, we're inside one of the sprung structures. We're standing right in the middle of the lounge area. Behind me, you can see some of the walls that are going up for some of the case manager offices. We'll also have some areas where we'll have some storage. And inside the facility here, on the exterior, you'll see that's where eventually the furniture will be installed for all the beds. This is the first step into getting that permanent housing. So this is an opportunity to provide some stability in someone's life so they can transition to something a little bit more permanent.
It needs to be a place that is inviting for them because many are concerned about coming into housing. So this interim housing needs to be welcoming.
City engineer Gary Lee Moore says months of environmental approvals and care goes into building just one shelter. The Bureau of Engineering is building several of them under Mayor Garcetti's Bridge Home Plan. With frustration mounting over these facilities not being built fast enough, 2020 could be the year that LA finally puts a real dent on homelessness. Permanent supportive housing projects, funded by Triple H Dollars, are now finally starting to open. And the Bureau of Engineering hopes to open more of these temporary shelters through June.
Five are in construction that'll be finished in February. We'll start another five in February. And two are in design. And our goal is to finish all of these by June of 2020. And that'll result in almost 1,400 beds, so 1,400 people off the street.
Hopefully more as residents move on to permanent housing to make room for new shelter residents in an ongoing cycle. Yes, LA is building. Let's just hope it can build faster than people fall into homelessness.
Mom always said, eat your veggies. And now residents in Watts don't have to go very far to get them. The area has been considered a food desert for decades. But Saidah Pagan tells us that's now a thing of the past.
Three, two, one.
Cheers went up as the ribbon was cut, marking the return of a Smart &amp; Final supermarket in the Watts area. Inside, hundreds of eager shoppers turned out on opening day, filling the aisles and the checkout lines. They were excited to finally find wholesome, fresh food without having to travel long distances.
I'm feeling ecstatic and grateful for this momentous occasion.
Watts is on the government's list of food deserts. That means residents have to travel more than a mile to go grocery shopping and often experience food insecurity. But after years of hard times, this underserved community is now benefiting from a massive revitalization program. LA City Council member Joe Buscagino was among those who made it happen.
But if you go inside to Smart &amp; Final today, you're gonna see your neighbors working in there. You're gonna see our Watts residents working. You're gonna see residents from Jordan Downs working. This is what we're all about as a city.
Community activists agree that this supermarket symbolizes more than just food.
This Smart &amp; Final bring hope. It brings jobs. It brings everything that councilman said.
The huge grocery warehouse got rave reviews from shoppers who liked the high quality and competitive pricing.
What's important to local residents is that this particular store has a wide variety of produce and all of the major brands.
And it's great because I see everything and they have everything what I need. When I chop and I have to go to a different store, so and I think over here I'm gonna find everything what I need.
City leaders say the Smart &amp; Final store is just the start. They have big plans for the Jordan Downs Plaza. New housing units are being built nearby. And before long, these residents may be shopping at a new Nike store and enjoying a cup of coffee at a Starbucks. Besides opening the new store, Smart &amp; Final also donated $7,500 to local community groups. Boots on the ground. That's the latest effort by the first council district to make the neighborhood safer. We were there as the area's first LAPD foot patrols hit the streets.
The reason we're here today is to announce the beginning of a foot patrol, LAPD, that the council member was able to secure funds to have his patrol here on the North Figueroa Corridor for the next two and a half years.
This was a project that was initiated by Councilman Sadio. He approached us and asked us if we'd be interested in employing officers on the Figueroa Corridor on a foot beat. And of course, we were extremely interested. The whole intent of this is just to go back to that old community policing where officers get to know the businesses.
So the council member decided to want to seek funds, secure funds for this as a proactive preventative measure, to have police, or better to have them actually walking on the weekends where most of the issues happen, where there's more of the foot traffic.
That's an excellent partnership. I think it's very well needed in this community. There's a lot of foot traffic in this area. And at night, I know that my clients and my employees will feel a lot more safer now going home and going to their cars after they leave here. I think it's very good that they're going door to door to introduce themselves to the companies and the local businesses here. That way, we know what's going on and that we're aware that the service that they're providing is now forthcoming, and it's good to hear.
The police are gonna be here to provide safety for everyone.
LA Census kiosks go nationwide. The 2020 Homeless Count is looking for volunteers. A toiletry drive gets underway. All this and more in City B. The Information Technology Agency and the Census team are collaborating on Census Action kiosks, computers configured for public spaces that people can use to answer the census. ITA created the desktop and laptop image and security guidelines and requirements. This model has now been picked up for a national recommendation to help other cities get more people to participate in the census. Homeless Count 2020 takes place January 21st through the 23rd, and your help is needed. Every year, we count the number of people experiencing homelessness throughout the county through the Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count. The Count helps us better understand homelessness in our region and direct resources where they're needed most. Thousands of volunteers are needed to canvass more than 80 cities and 200 communities across LA County. Sign up today at theycountwillyou.org. Council District 6 has launched its annual toiletry drive on behalf of human trafficking survivors. Survivors of human trafficking often escape with little more than the clothes they are wearing. And toiletries can provide comfort and help restore a sense of normalcy. Through February 6 toiletry donations such as shampoo, soap, hair products, dental products, and feminine hygiene items are being accepted. You can also give gift cards to be used by survivors to purchase their own toiletries. All items and gift cards will be donated to CAST, Saving Innocence and Journey Out, three LA-based organizations that provide wraparound services and compassionate care to survivors of human trafficking. Drop-off locations include LA City Hall, LA City Hall Room 470, Sun Valley District Office, and Van Nuys City Hall Office. For information, you can also call Patricia Chavez at 213-473-7006.
Today, we have a senior snowball in which we welcome seniors who are in our Wreckin' Parks facilities through our Department of Aging. Come and celebrate the holiday season.
I love to see how the Getty House opens its doors to all residents. It's the people's house.
I feel very good. I'm 102 years young. And just to get out of the house and see the sunshine.
It's probably my very favorite event of the year. I love this event because there's more wisdom, more experience, more stories, more of Los Angeles's richness here in this event than any other event I go to each year.
So many times we seem to be forgotten, and this is what makes me feel good.
I like the beat, but I can't move my feet.
You dance harder than the young people when they come here. You know that these are the days to savor, to give back. It's also a chance, not just for folks to see Getty House and to find each other, but to learn critical information. So today, they're learning about the census and how we can make sure that all seniors are counted. Fill out the census this year, 2020. Go to census.gov or show up at a local library and we'll help you out.
For many kids of immigrant parents, staying connected to their cultural roots can be tough. But there's one city library program that's using art to plant a seed for future generations.
We are at Chinatown Branch Library. Today, we're having our Chinese New Year, Chinese lanterns, arts and crafts. We are celebrating Year of the Rat. It's very important for kids to be here today because this program is more than about celebrating Chinese New Year. It's about bringing awareness to the culture, to Chinese arts and crafts, and it's about celebrating the Chinese traditions. We want, you know, children to understand where they're coming from, you know, where their families are from, you know, where they grew up, and, you know, things that they may not learn here so much like in school, they could learn here at the library. Chinese New Year is going to be held on January 25th, 2020. And we are having our Chinatown Golden Dragon Parade here on February 1st. So we just want to kind of build in all these cool activities.
Chinese New Year was started about 3,500 to 3,800 years ago. So the legend was that in this village in China, there was a monster.
As a Chinese, I always think that it's important to share my culture and heritage with other people so that other people can also learn from our culture and heritage. And at the same time, I love to learn, you know, from other people as well. Well, I hope that, you know, everybody will come out to celebrate Chinese New Year with us. It's a fun festival. We have the parade. You know, we have different dancing and different food, especially a lot of candies, and share our culture and celebrate with us and have wonderful blessings for the whole year.
But wait, there's more. If you want to sharpen your street art skills, the library offers that too. Artist and East LA native Gajin Fujita recently held a hands-on workshop exploring techniques of spray painting, stenciling, and lettering.
It's very important for me personally because I was born and raised in the city, LA. And the public library that I frequented in my neighborhood served as like a sanctuary for me when I was a kid. And so I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
He's showing the participants, who are all teens, about doing his kind of art, you know, doing street art, which is where he got started, sort of the ideas at the library. He uses very bold colors. And he tells us that he got those bold colors from looking at tropical fish books at the library.
For me, it's about trying to empower the youth of our city and strap them with, you know, knowledge of art.
More than just books and magazines and videos and DVDs, we're a cultural center. And so, you know, that's what first drew Gajin to the library, is he needed a place that was cooler, but he also thought of it as a community center. Maybe 10 or 15 years, we'll have an art card from one of these students. That would be nice.
The library has lots of other great programs. To learn more, visit lapl.org/events. From traditional cultural performances, food tastings, and family activities, the Ashagatsu Family Festival highlighted Japanese tradition and brought the community together.
Happy New Year!
It's an opportunity for us to celebrate the New Year, to ring in the New Year, but also to give back to our community, our local community, as well as to our members with an extraordinary day of high energy, cultural celebration, entertainment.
We're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste of the Japanese culture.
Things about each culture that are really important and that make every person an individual, but also brings people together.
How fun was that? Well, for more events at the Japanese American National Museum, visit j a n m dot org. Well, if you ask me what a fun night looks like, I'd say good food, good wine, and good friends. What can be better than that? Well, Union Station was the place to be for all those things.
2020 Unported Wine Festival, woo woo! Oh, to drink all the wine. There's 150 different vendors. So we will for sure be hitting each one of those up.
We have about 60 wineries from across the globe, gourmet food trucks, photo booth, live band, DJ, lots of fun stuff for people to come and enjoy with their friends.
Everybody's got a taste in it, but events like this bring so many different people into one location. Really good wine, good friends, hopefully a little bit of trouble, just a little bit.
As you notice, like, there's a lot of great, like, vibe around here. The energy's so high, everybody's so happy.
The community is gonna be up and popping when you come to events like this because it's free pouring, lots of vino, lots of sparkly bubbly. But it actually shows that, you know, LA still has that love, that energy for the community.
We will be back again in June to do a summer version this year.
A Happy New Year to everybody, and may this 2020 be spectacular.
How do you get your voice heard when it comes to community issues? Well, there's a city department called Empower LA that encourages you to play a bigger role in your local government. Saidah Pagan sat down with the new head of the department. Saidah. Thanks, Yana. Today, we are in conversation with Raquel Beltran, the new general manager of the Los Angeles Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. She spoke to me about her vision for Empower LA. You were appointed a few months ago. So tell us what you've been doing in that time. I know you've been hard at work meeting with some of these councils.
Well, I initiated a listening tour with the neighborhood councils. And I average six neighborhood councils a week. I've been able to visit about 59 neighborhood councils. And it has been a wonderful experience, talking and listening with the elected leadership from the communities all over Los Angeles.
A lot of public officials have gotten their start with the neighborhood councils. Tell us how that's possible.
It's my favorite part of this system. Whenever anybody decides that they're going to start interfacing with government, start attending government meetings, start figuring out what avenues exist in order for you to be able to express yourself, your thoughts, and to serve your community, you've already taken a step forward in learning how to govern, how to become an elected official.
My name is Lily Larson. I'm 17, and I've been an activist since I was five. There is no age too young to get involved in your community. Let's come together and make change for the highest good, for our neighborhoods, for our city, our state, our country, and our planet.
What I see happening rapidly is an increase in the number and the experience that young people are developing by being elected and appointed to serve on these neighborhood councils. The numbers are increasing all over the city.
We're both running for positions in the city of Van Nuys. And we just want to get more information on how to start building our campaign and also getting information on how we can make our city better and what are specific roles that we can use to make our community a lot better.
They are energetic. They're inspired by other young people around the world who are getting engaged for a variety of reasons in their communities and in global issues. And the neighborhood council system provides people that opportunity.
Now, I'm sure there are people who are watching, who would like to get involved. So give us some first steps.
So I encourage people to start by just going to our website, empowerla.org. Research which neighborhood council is near your home. Attend those meetings. I always tell people, just go check it out. See what's happening. Get on the list so that you can start receiving the agenda so that you can become familiar with what they're discussing. Start attending the meetings. And then, when you feel comfortable, throw your hat in the ring, become a candidate. Ask the Neighborhood Empowerment Advocate to help you in that process, to help you learn more about it. They're available to give you that kind of support.
Well, thank you so much for empowering us by giving us this great information.
It's my pleasure.
Do your part to help beautify a local elementary, enjoy an evening benefiting Friends of the LA River, and take in a live outdoor music show. All this and things to do. Join Human Rights Campaign LA for their annual Day of Service. Volunteers are encouraged to spend a day being of service to Wal Grove Elementary School, doing campus beautification activities in honor of the service, work, and life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The HCR MLK Day of Service happens Monday, January 20th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more info, look for their event on signup.com. Join the good folks at Mohawk Bend for River Fest 2019, a very special event benefiting the Friends of the Los Angeles River. Sip on local brews while you chat with fellow Angelenos who are working towards urban river revitalization. Enjoy a river-themed playlist, raffle prizes, and more. The Third Annual River Fest happens Saturday, January 18th, beginning at 12:00 noon. For more info, visit folar.org. Ease into your new year with an afternoon of outdoor music brought to you by So Far Los Angeles. This music collective puts together live, open-air shows featuring three different acts, curated to give audiences a diverse musical experience. Saturday, January 18th, we'll see the group Soul Flow take center stage at a secret location. Soul Flow at So Far Sounds begins at 3:00 p.m. For ticket information, visit sofar sounds dot com. Would you like to learn how to master wig making in one day? Even if you've never used a sewing machine? Well, Fingas Beauty Academy is going to unveil all the secrets to lace front and lace closure wig making in a hands-on, eight-hour wig-making class. If you're ready to take your skills to the next level or just try something new for 2020, reserve your spot today. The Fingas Beauty Academy Hands-On Wig Making Class happens Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For more, visit lacelock.net. For the fourth year, Lee's Market and the Brothers of Iota Zeta Lambda are pulling out all the stops for the MLK Day of Service. This local fraternity chapter will once again be passing out toys and providing meals in honor of Dr. King's birthday. Join the festivities Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 12:00 noon at Lee's Market Takeout. If you need more info, send an email to leesmarketcatering@sbccglobal.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
MyLA311 links Angelinos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even senior citizen center. You can even pay your DWP bill. And report illegal dumping. MyLA311 puts the power of City Hall in the palm of your hand.
Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. Many of our homeless neighbors are veterans, women, children, survivors of domestic violence, and working individuals who can't keep up with housing costs. The Los Angeles Homeless Count on January 21st, 22nd...
Okay, miembros, conseguimos el comentario público general.
Okay, buenos días y bienvenidos al Consejo Municipal de Los Ángeles. Hoy es, disculpen, hoy es viernes, 17 de enero, y este Consejo Municipal se celebra martes, miércoles, y viernes. Señor actuario, tenemos un grupo, por favor pasen la agenda. Bloom &amp; Feivane Cedillo, Harris-Dazan, Wissar, Kresk, Correa, Lee, Martinez, Ofer, Prash, Rodriguez, and Wester. me preguntaba por cómo un controlador puede ser efectivo los controladores tienen que ser contadores públicos tienen que hacer los trabaje en las oficinas de contabilidad tengo cursos de universidad de contabilidad nuestro contador nuestro controlador ahorita es un abogado la mayoría de ustedes son abogados aquí el comité de financiamiento son abogados no tienen negocios estar aquí especialmente en comité de financiamiento soy harto con usted pero yo pienso que además de que ustedes chuecos ustedes no califican para estas posiciones poco ves quieres ser controlador ni siquiera tiene un título en historia vamos eso no tiene que ser una posición elegida para ser es una persona salariada con un contador público certificado vamos a ver cómo cambiar la ley Mike Greenspan se encuentra usted aquí hacia adelante señor tiene suministro de comentario público general Mike Greenspan los gueres o sea de California todavía no ve a los mismos ahora quiero decir algo porque nosotros estamos en el complemente de las tiendas tienes cinco cinco cero en el bulevar Sunset después de todo sabemos que era controversial tenían que ir al trabajo y encontrar un juez que los dejara continuar con todo lo que será ilegal en primer lugar pero demos crédito a lo que hacen los acreedores determinó por qué Howard Wilson se lo cortó en la garganta por qué hicieron eso porque tiene la licencia de licor y herb es una persona que pregon el licor si no tiene suficientes para atender el licor va al target en el bulevar Sunset recuerde es Herb Weston y Michael Byrdard de Torrance en el negocio del alcohol un conflicto de interés todos pero Weston para supervisor gracias gracias espaldamohada aquí el siguiente orador es doctor Meno Desire se encuentra usted aquí doctor Meno Desire no se encuentra aquí Corey Corey se encuentra aquí no está en la sala Armando Herman el señor Herman me está escandolando el micrófono le voy a acordar que no grite en el micrófono este es su primera y última molestación señor Herman 52.1 intimidación hostigamiento por qué no pueden callarse oficina de viscos de la ciudad al oeste del palacio municipal pero no porque me dejan en paz y estoy seguro desde la persona que se encuentra lado en esta acera y qué es lo que vamos a decir de este lado enemigo de la ciudad para todos ustedes esto va a ir en las actas lo que ustedes son los enemigos maneja una crisis de desamparados y ese jodido holocausto Eric Garcetti no puede arreglar nuestros problemas los demócratas como dijo de Trump políticamente jódanse váyanse al infierno porque no espero de ver en Pasadena en Estados Unidos muchas gracias señor sargento gracias doctor Meno Desire ya regreso no está en la sala Corey Smith muy bien parece ser que ninguna de esas personas se encuentran en la sala vamos a hacer el comentario público general muy bien miembros vamos a tomar una pausa para que nos asuntos de 2:45 se circule vamos a tomar una breve pausa Muy bien, ya me vamos a tomar una pausa para que nuestro asunto de dos cuarenta y cinco se circule, vamos a tomar una breve pausa. Vamos a presentarlo de la Escuela Primaria Chael Ementchay, metemos a mister Brandon, mister Sebastien, la clase de quinto grado, por favor todos se pueden levantar y muevan su mano, levántense. Bienvenidos al Consejo Municipal de Los Ángeles. Vamos a ver si la cámara puede alumbrarlos allá, a los niños ahí se encuentran. Bienvenidos, gracias señor Apriaron y señor Sebastien Potrera, no estoy aquí. Espero que tengan una gran visita, gracias. Muy bien señor actuario, ¿qué es lo que tenemos? Señora Presidente, el consejo tiene pedimientos para publicar el transferir. Muy bien, ya se publicaron ese transferir, mismos tenemos algunos anuncios, tiene muchas actividades que hacer este fin de semana. Señor Price, gracias señora presidenta, solo quiero invitar a la comunidad a que estén con nosotros en el concejal Harris Dazan y el concejal Herb Wesson y yo mismo para que lleguen a la marcha King este lunes. El desfile va a empezar en King y Western y va a terminar en en el parque La Marche y va a ser un festival de Martin Luther King con comida, música y exhibiciones, diversión. Una verdadera oportunidad para celebrar el legado de Martin Luther King, pero también del legado de nuestra comunidad. Es momento de venir juntos y va a ser una tremenda caravana de... ¿Qué van a dirigir el festival? Mi colega Harris Dazan quiere agregarse a la misma, pero va a ser realmente emocionante y estamos invitando los amigos vecinos y para que lleguen a celebrar con nosotros. Señor Dazan también quiere invitar, sí, sí, empieza su distrito, todos están invitados al desfile en el Distrito ocho y nueve después de la marcha, después del festival tenemos el festival Freedom, el festival en el parque, hay actividades para los niños. Muchas de organizaciones se encuentran ahí, van a ofrecer servicios, que tiene una docena de camionetas de comida, hay tres estaciones, una por KGL, el otro de qué y el otro para web, van a atender música en vivo en Sunset, el lunes en la noche. El departamento del personal va a ser contra ahí, pasa a pedir participantes de la ciudad. Allí algo para todos, algo para toda la familia, en el festival de la libertad, en el parque La Marche, después del desfile de Martin Luther King el lunes, voy a estar ahí con mis tenis nuevos, muchas gracias. ¿Hay algún otro anuncio señor Kecorian?
Muchas gracias señora presidenta, miembros hoy marca el veintiséis aniversario del temblor de Northridge que quitó la vida de cincuenta y nueve angelinos. Causó tremendo daño al valle de San Fernando y ya que marcamos ese aniversario pienso que es importante que la gente tome esta oportunidad para comenzar a prepararse, porque no sabemos por supuesto que el temblor, no somos cómodos, va a ocurrir otro temblor, pero sabemos que va a suceder, es inevitable, es importante que todos los angelinos se preparen. Recomendaría que todos fueran al readyla.com, va a proporcionar muchas herramientas y que la gente se prepare en sus propios hogares, el saber que va a tomar tiempo para las primeras personas que respondan a reactivar en una emergencia como esta. Los Ángeles es famoso por los temblores, por sus incendios, por sus inundaciones, somos la capital del mundo de desert naturales, en muchos aspectos debemos estar preparados, vamos a estar al list, a readyla.com. Gracias señor Kecorian, ¿tenemos algún otro anuncio señor Ofero?
Gracias señora presidenta, solo quiero hacer todos saber que están escuchando, que la próxima semana es una oportunidad de oro para los angelios en toda la ciudad para que sirvan de voluntarios. En la cuenta de pérdida de desamparados, esto empieza el veintiuno, va a ser una grúa de prensa que anunciara esto, vamos a tratar de divulgar todas las noticias que posiblemente podemos hacer para animar a muchos voluntarios, es una oportunidad increíble para que las personas verdaderamente que estén preocupadas cerca de la crisis en Los Ángeles, para que tomen parte a ayudar y tomen parte para ayudar a resolver la crisis con nuestra campaña de desamparados y la información que tenemos pasada en el conteo informa a nuestro acercamiento a buscar recursos adicionales para ayudar a presentar la crisis de desamparados en la crisis del día. Solo en el tercer distrito, por ejemplo. El conteo empieza el veintitrés que es el próximo jueves, el veintitrés, el lugar que vamos a asimilar voluntarios incluyen Eco Park, Silver Lake, Hollywood, Los Files, El Este de East Hollywood y creo si no me estoy equivocado el señor Ru también va a ser distrito número cuatro donde vamos a contar la mayoría de los vecindarios esta tarde, espero, animo a todos a los voluntarios que probablemente podamos obtener para ayudar con este asunto muy importante y pueden lo llevar en la website para tener información detallada, que cómo pueden involucrarse, las fechas donde ustedes vivan y dónde se va a llevar a cabo el concejal, es un conteo en todos los condados, pero la ciudad de Los Ángeles tiene un cuarenta por ciento de la población total del municipio de Los Ángeles, animamos a todos a que se involucren y busquen información, a ir a la website. Apreciamos todos los voluntarios que podemos obtener porque verdaderamente nos ayuda a obtener recursos adicionales en todo el municipio del estado y cómo presentamos esta crisis más efectivamente, eficientemente y rápidamente, todos pueden participar a ayudar a presentar esta crisis y con eso espero ver a todos la próxima semana. Gracias señor Ofero, ¿tenemos algún otro anuncio miembros? Muy bien, no ver ninguno, por favor todos se pueden levantar para terminar la sesión. Algún pedimiento para levantar la sesión a mi lado derecho? Algún pedimiento para levantar la sesión, Blumfield?
Gracias señora presidenta. Colegas, me gustaría pedirle que levantemos en memoria de Herb Bassen. Él fue el cofundador de la organización de propietarios de Woodland Hills, murió el día de ochenta y nueve años. El mes pasado fue alguien que se conoció en todo el West Valley y más allá por su trabajo, para hacer a Woodland Hills verdaderamente brillante. El haber crecido fue una de la generación, eran doce y detuvo esa atribución en cada esfuerzo que persiguió y después de la segunda guerra mundial dos, nació en Chicago, se anestó en el ejército y fue desempeñado con la cuestión que capacita a personas que estaban en la batalla, cuando salió del uniforme y llegó a Los Ángeles, conérgicamente creó una distribución de negocios de hombres respetuosas y fue voluntario incansable para levantar el estilo de vida para la gente que viva. En el adiós de West Hollywood y Woodland Hills, se casó para encontrar la organización de propietarios de Woodland Hills y se estribió, es una organización de propietarios permanente y pienso que las comunidades deben tener control y grandes como la ciudad trata con los asuntos. Cuando le ha de crear un sistema de consejos de la ciudad, se presenta una sesión, el vallier Herb estaba en el frente y uno de los padres fundadores del consejo de Warner Brothers, donde literalmente ella sirvió continuamente de esa fecha hasta hace un año cuando fumerto por una enfermedad seria. Fue también miembro de la cámara de comercio de Woodland Hills y de dos, seis por treinta años. Estaba en todas partes en Woodland Hills. Pero como el presidente de la acción de propietarios de Woodland Hills actual dirigió a otras personas que hicieron la conversación en esas organizaciones y continuó, pero no ganelor, fue una parte vital de cada organización en la cual ayudó a crear y participar. Gracias Herb por su servicio a este país, edición del legado de hombres y hacer Woodland Hills una comunidad hermosa para jugar y trabajar, nuestras vidas son mejor por usted. Que descanse en paz, gracias. Gracias señor Blumfield, algún otro pedimiento para levantar la sesión? Al no ver ninguno, que tengamos fin de semana, esta junta terminado, gracias.